The Board calling this meeting to order at 6:30 on Monday, August 16th, 2021. The first thing I want to mention is that the agenda is going to be changed slightly. We will not be talking about the Shasberry Hollow additional charge under Department of Public Works, and we will be going into executive session at the end to talk about personnel and legal issues. So with the adjusted agenda, is there anybody who has a conflict of interest?
No.
No.
No. Okay, we have minutes from... That were circulated for Monday, August 2nd. Entertain a motion to accept them.
So moved.
Tony, seconded by Ken. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried for 00. This is warrant. Warrant number five. And the number down here is the right number?
Yes.
Is that right? Warrant number five for $142,004.13. And 46 cents.
So moved.
Motion by Tony, seconded by Ken. Okay, items that are... $1,000 or more. Aflac, which is taken out of the employee's pay and paid to Aflac. BCB, S of Vermont.
Just on Aflac, just to be clear, it's a 50-50 split where there's a short-term disability between the employee and the town.
So the town does pay some...
We pay 50% of the standard.
Okay, yep.
That's what's reflected in.
Bendy County, must be Bennington County BS of Vermont, what is that one?
Uh, well, BCB, S, Blue Cross Blue Shield of Vermont.
Okay, that's $4,500 for insurance, health insurance. Delurys, $1,100.
What was that, Dave?
Delurys was, uh, for the 7,800, the 15, 7,800, and the 13 actual, the 13 was the big one at 11,44. Tell me that in a minute here. Yeah, where was it? Let's see, that was a front brake issue, shoes low and drums were heat overheating. We moved and replaced drums and shoes and adjusted the brakes.
Fairfield Incorporated for $8,000.
That was the mower rental.
Yep. That was for last time, it's still coming back, right?
Yeah, it's coming back, yes.
New England Municipal Resource for $1,100.
That's a work with the Lister's.
Yep. And $8,800 for North Bennington Water Department.
That's 88,000.
Eighty-eight thousand, isn't it? That's for two months.
Yeah, that's for two billing cycles.
Shasberry Hollow Repair for $1,100. TAM.
Those are the last payments under their management contract to sell off TAM management contract, and the billings from here will be directly from us running it.
$1,100. We bought a trailer for $5,000 from Weaver.
Yeah, that was approved at the last meeting.
Yep. So, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye. So moved. Seconded.
Motion by Tony, seconded by Ken. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, so carried for 00. This part of the payroll, is it? In last meeting, we voted to buy a new server, and they agreed to sell it to us, but they wouldn't sell it to us until we paid for it, so...
They're nervous of them.
Wow. So, I signed a warrant here in the office because we'd already voted on it for him, for Dave to send them a check so we could get delivery on it, so we just need your signature. You did vote on it last meeting.
At the last meeting.
Just got some nerve.
They even wanted me to pay tax on it.
Yeah.
Really? Oh, really? Jeez.
Should've heard that discussion.
No, I wouldn't, can imagine. That was a tip.
Yeah.
Anybody have any announcements? I've got a couple. I've been asked to make everybody aware that we are, could use some help in both the DRB and the Planning Commission. They both have, I think, at least two, two empty slots.
Two opens.
The Planning Commission is the people that generate the town plan, has to be done every five years, I think, so they're, they're all the forward-thinking people about how they would like this town to be in the future, and the DRB is the people that go through the criteria that's required when somebody comes before them for a building lot or, or anything to do with zoning in the town, so we need some help. So if you want to serve the town, Dave would be glad to give you an application or you would be considered by the Board, so... The other thing that I would like to talk about briefly is that the dump is now, as I said last meeting, is now totally under our control. If you have any comments, we need to hear them. Any complaints? If you like what you're seeing, we'd like to hear that too, but obviously, this is your, this is your dump?
Transfer station.
Transfer station, I keep calling it the dump. Transfer station, we need to have it work for you, okay? Anything else? We are up to public comments now. Yes, please come up and state your name and address and we'll listen to you.
I'm Kathy Solian. I live on Shasberry Hollow Road. Thank you for letting me speak. I won't take much of your time. I'm one of the ones that was assigned a new 911 address, so I'm here to object to that. I understand that you guys are under some pressure from the state to have done what was done, but my first notice that any of this was going to happen was back in August of 2015, and then the next notice was in June of this year when I was told this was a done deal. That first notice that I received was addressed to me and another property owner, a camp owner, several lots up from me, who actually had an address on Shasberry Hollow Road, and I only have assumptions as to why, but that doesn't matter now, he's gone. Anyway, one of the reasons that Shelley had listed on this letter why the 911 address was required was it said that the addresses assigned to your properties are incorrect and therefore potentially misleading to emergency personnel, and she said, "Your driveways do not intersect with Shasberry Hollow Road as your addresses would indicate." That's true of that other person, but not me. I've read all the materials, I've talked to Shelley, I've talked to Dave, David, and I've talked to, or emailed with Tyler, the 911 guy, and what I'm seeing is the state is requiring that any locatable structure where someone can generate a 911 call will get its own unique 911 address, and as you probably know, there's no cell service up there. I don't get cell service where I live if I didn't have my microcell booster. When I mentioned that to Tyler, his point was that someone could have a cellphone booster up there somewhere and potentially someone might be able to get cell service off of it, but my booster plugs into a wall, and I know they don't have electricity up there, and even if you were at my house, you couldn't get cell service through my booster. So, they might kind of be locatable, but there's no generating a 911 call up there. Nobody lives up there, and they shouldn't, nobody gets mail, and I'm the only resident, I'm the only locatable structure that can generate a 911 call. My driveway starts at Shasberry Hollow Road. It's a deeded right-of-way for the properties up past me. I do not have a right-of-way to get to my own house. It's not a shared road, it's not a shared driveway, it's not a shared right-of-way. Tyler had stated that my new address number was 120, which represents .12 miles, he said, down the road to my individual driveway. I'm here to say, this is my driveway. My house may be .12 miles up that driveway, but that's just where my house is. I am the right-of-way. I already have a 911 address, I don't need another one, and in the 25 years I've lived there, I've only called 911 once, when somebody on a four-wheeler hit a water bar, and he went one way and the four-wheeler went the other way, but everybody found me just fine. First responders, ambulance, state trooper, they all got there, no issues. I'm told that I should probably consider putting a sign down at the bottom of my driveway. Sleepy Hollow is what somebody decided the name of my driveway ought to be. I can tell you, I have no intentions of putting a sign down there, just to have someone steal it. Camp owners, if they want to do that, they're welcome to do that, but quite frankly, the last thing I need is for anybody driving around that area to consider or to think that that's a road and drive up that driveway. I know that may sound ridiculous, who would do that, but I can tell you who would do that. A number of years ago, I, there were two Bennington College young women who decided to take a drive at midnight in the dead of winter and almost out of gas, and they somehow found their way up Shasberry Hollow Road, I'm two miles up, and they saw a sign tagged to a tree that said Sleepy Hollow, and up they came, and needless to say, they didn't make it because they got stuck. They spent the night, my husband and I were able to dig them out the next morning, and that's the kind of people that would look at Sleepy Hollow sign and decide to come up. And by the way, that sign that was on the tree has been stolen. I've been told that this decision is a done deal, yet except for the 911 service, no one else is going to be able to find me on Sleepy Hollow Road. The Bennington Post Office doesn't know, I've checked twice, I'm not on any map, Googling gives me Sleepy Hollow Road in Manchester, Sleepy Hollow Drive in Reesboro, oh, Searsburg, sorry. I'm not on a GPS system and I have no sign, so I just kind of disappear. 911 is the only one that would recognize Sleepy Hollow, if anybody remembered to say, "I live on Sleepy Hollow." And as far as the name of that driveway, except for the short conversation I had with Shelley a few years, well, six years ago, no one bothered to ask me, and I'm the only residence there. I understand that the chief, I'm supposing the fire chief, was asking his colleagues what they thought that name ought to be. I don't really care what you call it, you can call it Sleepy Hollow, Creepy Hollow, it doesn't matter to me. My suggestion would have been to call it Impassable Road or Private Road, so nobody goes up that road. I understand your concerns about liability, and if the on-the-off chance I had to call 911, I would not be locatable. Clearly, I am locatable with my Shasberry Hollow address. If the camps must have an address, name their road Sleepy Hollow, but leave me like I am. If I were to call 911, it happened to remember my new address, but perhaps couldn't give directions, where would they go? Shasberry, Manchester, or Reesboro? Now that's your liability to me, right there. I'm almost done, I won't read all this stuff. I, I just want to suggest, I want to request that the Select Board reverse the decision of my house being on Sleepy Hollow Road and having that new 911 address, and leave me as I am. I have road frontage, I have significant amount of road frontage, you can see my house from the road except for this time of year, and if you go up a little further toward the creek, you can see my house. I don't know if you have any comments about this, I knew this was discussed back in January? No.
Not. The whole business of camps needing a 911 address was discussed, but nothing specific, and we just, and because it was hard to know exactly where somebody's camp was in their lot, I think the decision by the state was we will pick the center of the lot, is that right, not right, Dave?
Yeah, because the way this started was just that way, the state actually came to us, they sent us a very strong letter that our failure to assign, like most towns do, camps' addresses would lead to liability on the town's part should someone become injured, and we went back and forth on, well, how you define an address for a camp that has no fixed spot, so we came up with this assignment of numbers based on the, pretty much the center point of the camp, as well as Sleepy Hollow continues up, which I'll grant you, at some parts, like we pointed out to the state, is like a mule trail, but that was good enough for them, and, you know, this is more or less a directive from the state that we don't really have much say in.
I understand that, and that's why I read all of this stuff and got all the details, and their point being, number one, is that they want to be able to find that person. They can find me, I know they can, and the other is that, and their definition was it had to be locatable, good luck up there, and they had to be able to generate a 911 call. How are they going to do that?
Well, depending on the service, and I'm not sure if all services don't...
It doesn't go up there.
Well...
I've, I checked that out, and it's on the website.
Every service?
Every service.
Every single service.
Yes, and it, it doesn't go up to my house.
But what if, what if it becomes available, which I think is their point of view? And, and again, this is all coming from the state.
I understand.
We're kind of going to align with this because we really...
Is there a landline? I mean...
They, I have a landline, I have electricity, and I have a cellphone only because of that, but they also came back to me, Tyler, and it looks like with the town, that it's up to you to make that final decision, and it has to do with liability, that I understand if, if I were to call and they couldn't find me, that somehow the town would be liable. Well, if I have a 120 Sleepy Hollow Road, where the heck is that?
It's already there.
It's already there, but the only...
It's already in the 911 system.
I know, I saw that.
So...
Nobody else knows I'm there.
And the, the object again is, there's one criteria, otherwise the whole system falls apart.
Can't those camps have that?
The right-of-way is regarded as a private road, so that's why we reverted back to the Sleepy Hollow name, and your driveway is 120 because it's location up that private road is the way it's perceived by them.
That's where my house is, that's not where my driveway is.
The only way for 911 to work is when you get a number, you go to the driveway on the road, you have no driveway on Shasberry Hollow, that's what they're saying.
Yeah, that's my driveway. I own that driveway.
Well, that's, that's a right-of-way, that's a sleepy hollow, whether you, it's a right-of-way over your property or not, it's still considered a private road to access all those other things, that's what they're saying.
Well, that's not how I read it, but I understand what you're saying.
Yeah.
So, so let me just, let me just say this, because I know you're under the gun and you don't want to argue with the state. If all you do is leave my mailing address as it is, I can live with that, because nobody else except 911 knows where Sleepy Hollow is, and even if any of us put a sign up there, you know as well as I do, it's not going to stay.
Well, we, I'm sorry, go ahead, Lauren.
Yeah, I just, we aren't prepared to vote on this tonight.
I know, I understand that.
We're just taking comments, please.
Yeah, I understand.
We will put, we've got, there's, there's a lot to it. I really need to know whether Sleepy Hollow Road is a road that we get paid, is it a town road?
No.
It's like many, all of our private roads.
It's a driveway.
And some of our private roads are just like this, they kind of like fade off into the woods, but, and the right-of-ways, it's, it's maybe somewhat unusual for the right-of-way to traverse solely your property until it gets to other properties, but many of them are combined properties that meet somewhere as it goes through.
Isn't it really more just a GPS grid book?
There's no GPS in that.
The, the local...
No, I mean, I mean, 911, is it figured that way?
This is my property, that's my house.
911 is just based on the road and where the driveway to the house is on the road, that's why, and we've had this come up on Furnace Brook and other roads where the address was, yours goes back a long time, but these other ones, the address was improperly assigned, and the driveway is on a different street, well, the 911 functions by going to a driveway. So if it's, if you take Furnace Brook and put it on East Road, they'll go to East Road, and that's where the driveway to the house will be, and that's where they want to be.
Well...
Well, I guess my only point would be is, that is my driveway, and it comes off of Shasberry Hollow Road, and that's how you get, it doesn't go to a driveway, it goes to my house, and if you're under the gun where the state says we don't care, too bad, tough luck, lady, just leave my mailing address as it is.
Well, we're never going to change your mailing address.
That's not what I'm told.
Uh, well...
Shelley said that's my new mailing address.
Well, I'm not aware of us doing anything with the post office.
Did you check with the post office?
Twice, but I'm told they were sent a letter, which doesn't matter anyway, I live in Shasberry, I have North Bennington mailing address, and Bennington delivers my mail sometimes.
Is it?
Yeah, sometimes.
Sure, you can have that.
Yeah, okay.
But anyway, I won't take more of your time unless you have a question for me, but when you think about it, if you feel like you have no other choice...
We may not have to, we may not have the ability to change it.
I understand, uh, just leave my mailing address alone.
We don't, we don't have anything to do with mailing addresses.
No.
No, and if 911 is the same with, you mentioned Google and all these services, most, you know, a lot of them are behind, and changes like this, they will eventually change the entire thing to Sleepy Hollow on all their maps, and you'll be assigned 120 Sleepy Hollow on Google and everything else.
But the mailing, I don't...
I don't know, I'm, you know, maybe Shelley knows something, I don't know, I never knew this had anything to do with the post office.
Well, it, it has, there's a lot of material.
Yeah.
And I've read all of it, but...
Who does deliver the mail?
North Bennington.
Does North Bennington?
Bennington.
Actually, Bennington?
Bennington delivers our mail. North Bennington will deliver packages that Bennington delivers the mail.
Is it...
I don't know why we have a Shasberry Post Office.
Is it Sue, Sue Gully?
Sue, yeah.
Okay, yes, she does.
Shasberry Post Office.
She goes out of Bennington, so, yeah.
So...
Let me talk to Sue.
Go ahead.
I will talk to Sue and find out who, who determines a mailing address, okay?
I don't want to change my mailing address.
I realize that.
Good luck. Mine gets changed three times.
Yeah, well, mine's changed twice.
Yeah.
So, and that doesn't include this one, and...
Where's your mailbox?
It's right there, at the bottom of my driveway.
On Shasberry Hollow?
On Shasberry Hollow Road, I face Shasberry Hollow Road, I plow that road, I maintain that road.
Could somebody build on one of those lots behind you possibly? Is it possible?
Not if they had, unless they're insane.
Is it the forest and rec zone though, or something?
Uh, no, apparently the zoning changed that, I don't know why.
The zoning changed in those, those areas that theoretically could be built up.
So if somebody did build back there, then you would be...
You could, you could not build up in there.
No, you could do anything with enough money, I think, if somebody...
Yes, if you had enough money and you were insane.
Okay.
Am I right? Anyway, all right, so that's where I'm going to leave it, if anybody has questions, I'm easy to find.
We will work on it, and we'll put it on the agenda if we have more.
Okay.
We want you again, okay?
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Yep, thank you, Kathy. Who else?
Good evening.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Jennifer Proudy Hoffman, I live at 545 Harvest Hills Drive. My husband, John, and I have built a home there, we have 40 acres of land, and not only is it our home, but we also run both of our businesses from our home, which we are allowed to do because we are not subjected to the covenants of the rest of the road. We have paved our driveway, and there is a small section of Harvest Hills Drive which is unpaved, so everyone else who lives on Harvest Hills Drive traverses over a paved road, except Dr. Ellis and her husband, and John and I, we have to go over the unpaved section to then be able to get to our driveways. We are asking for the town to finish paving the rest of Harvest Hills Drive. We understand that when the road was paved many years ago, that there were no homes at the end of the cul-de-sac, and that we have since built homes out there, and we are just simply asking for the town to finish paving that public right-of-way.
One of the concerns is that for years, town was taking, was paving roads that were not brought up to state standards, Harvest Hills is one of them, and if you know, it breaks up terrible, so what we've got to do is find out what it would cost to bring that section up to standards and that sort of stuff. In the meantime, I, I went up there and I saw it, in the meantime, I think if we took up some, some of the crushed gravel and then put chloride on it, or whatever he's using to control the dust until we can come up with a, with a budget item as to what it would cost, and so I know that the town, town foreman kind of roughs something up, and I think it's only right that I go to Boldwinds or somebody that does this for a living and get a price.
Yeah, because the, yeah, we did materials only.
That's right.
And another thing, of course, you bring up the condition of the road in general, it's a road that needs to be worked on.
Yeah.
So, on a practical matter and, and, you know, efficiencies of scale, when we're looking at having to redo the entire road, which isn't going to be that far away, it might be the best time to extend or consider, because the pricing would be so much better doing it then, because that road wasn't, it wasn't built right in the first place, under the pavement, you can see it's like paper thin.
Well, and my understanding is that town water stops where the pavement stops, and that town water will not ever be extended further, I've talked to Ted Villa about this several times.
Who did you talk to?
Ted.
It's North Bennington Water Department.
North Bennington Water.
Yeah.
Sorry, yes.
Okay, but I, I don't think there's... Okay, but I, I don't think there's, I think they can extend it.
Uh, yeah, that's North Bennington's issue.
That's, that's a different, but my point being that I've asked many times, we've had a lot of water issues at our property, and so we've had to spend an ungodly amount of water, amount of money to get water there that is drinkable. So, I would love to have that happen, but I have been told repeatedly it will not happen. But just, if you are going to undertake redoing the entire road, I've been told by Ted that the water pressure at Harvest Hills is always the biggest problem in North Bennington. If there's a pressure issue, it's from Harvest Hills. So, not to make us a bigger request, but if you are going to repave the entire road, you should, I think, talk to Harvest, to North Bennington about the water mains at the same time. It may be the right time to tackle both issues.
No, that's, that's the same thing we're doing here with the state, because we have some mains to replace. We let them know whether or not they're going to spend the money to, to do that. I, we don't do the water there, so I hadn't even heard about the water pressures there, but that's interesting, yeah. You would be pretty far towards the end of the, their line, too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, I, I, there are, there are some potholes there, and I, I, a couple loads of gravel on the grader and, and some...
One thing, yeah, one thing Mike said, when he, he went up to look after I talked to him, was like, yeah, that we can, we can touch it up, and we can make it more like a hard pack. And then, like I said, I think the best thing to do is, when we look at the overall reconstruction, that's not in the too distant future. It, just economies of scale would be, that'd be the time to...
Redo the whole road?
To extend it, yeah.
But in, in the meantime, I'm going to ask, also find out what it would cost.
Yeah.
Because it would have to be done at that time, too.
Yeah, yep.
Okay.
Well, there are other people here, so if anybody else wants to speak to the issue...
I'm just gonna add a few things. I actually told my kids that I was going to come to the meeting. I'm Lisa Ellis, so, I'm the...
Are they watching on Zoom? Because we'll have to use the camera.
I don't know, I don't know if they're watching. But there are eight and, and six. I actually was hoping that I was able to bring them, bring them here, but, but I came directly from work, it was a busy day. But anyway, so what the boys wanted me to say was, the reason they want the road to be paved is because they fell multiple times when they were riding their bike. I mean, nothing really bad happened. The six-year-old scraped his knee, and the eight-year-old never really fell. He, he said he almost fell multiple times. So, I figured I'll add that to one, I hate to ask, the...
The crush, the crushed gravel we're using now would be a lot better than what's there.
Yeah.
I saw some pretty big stuff.
And it packs much better.
Yes.
You can fix those potholes after a rainstorm, the potholes come right back. So, yeah, there's something wrong with that little area.
Yeah, it's, an issue we've been fixing all over town in the last few years. We'll get it working so they don't come back. Yeah, there's a way to fix that.
Yes.
Uh-huh.
You can let Mike know.
Okay.
Yeah, because we've had that issue. It's a material issue, and how the road was put together originally, so, unless it turns out there's a spring under that road...
Well, that's what I was wondering.
Yeah, and that, we can also fix it by putting a drain through it.
That may be the...
Yeah.
The temporary solution before, before that's paved.
Yeah, we'll look at that. Because we don't like, it's a waste of money to keep filling potholes.
Right, 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 yeah.
Okay.
Sounds good, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? All set? Okay. Thank you for coming. It's good to have company.
Yeah.
Usually sit here alone most of the time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Bye-bye.
You're up.
Please.
Okay. Make sure that camera's pointed the other way, yeah?
[laughing]
Uh, well, you guys just approved a warrant, and that is going to be more money than we actually have in the checking account, but you shouldn't be alarmed, because most of that is water money, so I'll, I'll make a transfer from reserves before I even write the checks. So, we're not in any danger of bouncing. But you just, I think if you look down, we've got, oh, 140, something like that, thousand in cash? Yeah, yeah, it's pretty close. And you just approved a warrant for 130...
130, 130 something, was it?
I think it was more, even more than that.
Yeah, it was 140 something.
Yeah. So, don't, don't be worried, we've got the money. It, just because the, the bulk of that is, is the water money, and that'll come right out of the reserve account. I just don't think all the interesting going on with the general fund right now. Also, I've got the, I printed the first hundred tax bills today. Everything is all set up, my gorgeous new folding machine.
I was going to ask you if you got a folder.
Oh, that's a folding machine.
It works like a charm. So that's going to, I think we should, I should be able to get the bills in the mail for sure by the end of this week, especially with that handy-dandy machine. So, and then, we won't even need to worry about the, the cash situation, the, the money will start flowing in right away. Any questions about any of that, about tax bills? They're due November 10th this year, you guys voted on that. That is the same as Bennington or North Bennington. It's the middle of the week, which is weird for most Shasburyites, so make sure, I'm going to stamp them all with a date to make it really clear, but it's November 10th. Don't wait for Friday, just because you've paid Friday other years. It's going to be, I believe that's a Wednesday. If you want to look down to the very bottom of that one, you see a great big number there. We have a new fund, and that's where we're parking the ARPA money. We need to, you can see it's 179 and change, 79,000 and change. There, you see it? It's that new 900 fund. And the, the state, well, actually, that's federal money, and they, they want us to keep it separate, but they actively do not want a separate bank account for it. I don't know why that...
It's our...
Yeah, they, we, I looked into it, I thought that I should probably have it completely sequestered, but that they actively want us to do it the way we had already done it, so, so we're fine. We've got a brand-new fund, any spending will come directly out of that 900, and no other money will ever touch it.
What's it for?
Uh, well, it's...
Well, that's up in the air at this point.
Yeah.
That's the federal money that we're eventually going to have close to a million dollars of.
Yeah.
Uh, we talked about it for the water, but nothing's in stone yet, and we have told 2026 to spend it. So, it's just accumulating. Right now, it's going to sit.
Good place for it.
Yeah, 900 fund, it's a great place.
Yeah, we'll get...
Two cents interest on it.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. And that's the other thing, is they want, that we get to keep the interest on it, and that's another reason that, that this is the, the, the way they want it handled. So it will start accumulating interest if we don't spend it right away.
That was interesting. PPP money was the same way. They had to keep it separate, but they didn't, didn't tell you you had to have a separate checking account or anything.
Right, right, yeah, they, they, they sent out an advisory that they wanted us not to open new accounts, which I thought we had to do. So, yeah, and the only other thing going on, you see, is that's still some, some late water payments coming in. Not, that, that was a grant or something was bulk of it, I talked about that earlier, that 4310 there. So that isn't all water payments, there's something else, but not a huge amount of money. Any questions about any of that? Going to be all tax bills all the time, starting very soon.
All set, Mike?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
Alrighty, thank you.
Thank you, Melon.
Thank you.
Mike, not coming tonight today?
Hi, I thought Mike would be coming tonight, but I think after we changed, we're not having any discussion on the hollow. There's not a lot going on, on roads other than the hollow, which was taking up a good deal of time for, for him especially. That's nearing completion. They're back on the graders, so they're working on the roads and usual ditching and mowing and, and the normal maintenance. There's no project going on now, it's just a regular maintenance of the roads.
Yeah, there's one more covered on Rollin' Road. There's one more covered.
There's one more to do. I don't think they've started it yet, though, have they?
No, they haven't, but I think when they get that done, then they'll finish the road.
They'll finish, they'll finish Rollin' out, yeah.
Because it's kind of rough right now with all the, all the work that's been done on there lately.
Yeah, and the only project really coming up will be West Mountain Road, that has to be completed by October, the end of October.
And Weaver has the contract.
And Weaver has the contract on that.
Oh, he has a full crew now, so to say, is that not right?
Uh, I'm not aware of his staffing, I don't know.
Did, did the new hire, did Nick...
Oh, our crew? I thought you were asking about Weaver's crew. I was like, I don't know. Yeah, we have a, we have a full crew as of today.
Because we were down two people, plus Mike took vacation, so this...
We're, we're all back, yeah.
We're just getting things rolling.
Yeah, the new hire started this morning.
Sure.
We're all set to go. That's really all I have for the highways today. It's summertime and the grading is, is a little behind, but with all the rain, we lost quite a number of days, can't go out and do it then.
Has the new backhoe guy in here yet, or no?
Oh, no, no. That'll be a while. About a few weeks, maybe, you know, actually, I'm thinking...
What is that? I thought that was all approved.
I thought they had a, did they have it in...
Well, it's going to take a month at least to get to, is my understanding.
Okay. And, and the tractor's got to be ordered, so that's a year away.
Yeah, the tractor, I, I meant to ask Mike today about that, but yeah, that's, that's a year away, we're not seeing that.
No, I knew that one, but I thought I...
No, the tractor is there, they have a tractor or can get their hands on one. But I, from the paperwork I got, it was going to be at least a month or so. Because I did the financial paperwork last week, and...
For the excavator?
Yeah, for the excavator, yeah. Yeah, so it's still a little bit to go on that.
Um, we talked about trees quite a bit. I don't know, is that, that's more of a wintertime project?
Yeah, the trees will always be taken up in the winter, it's easier to work on, and that's when we can get services for cheaper, too.
Did, have you heard any more about the contract that the power company has with a tree company that's going to take down all the ash?
Uh, no, that is an ongoing multi-year contract with them, and they will come around as needed, and as they determine when it needs to be done. The Davey crews that were here, which were taking down things that were around the power line, if they came across that ash that was in bad condition, they would take those down. We actually got a call about a tree that's growing through power lines. I don't know how they missed it, or didn't think it was important, so I'm getting them back to look at it, it's on Myers Road. But the way I understood it from the, from the Green Mountain office was this contract is statewide, and that when a tree, an ash is in difficulty, then they'll come back and take it down. They're not just going to go around taking them all down. Excuse me.
Oh, okay.
Because they can't afford to, just like everybody else can't afford to.
All right.
Yeah, so it's, it's still up in the air.
Any questions about, all set?
No, all good.
Okay. We have a couple liquor licenses. Are these for a specific date, or are they...
Yeah, yes.
Operation, the date, 8, 8/18/21?
Yeah, this weekend.
This is for the Dutchman Tavern, is asking for this. For just one day? Is that 3:00 or...
Yeah, I think it's 3:00, 3:00 PM to 10:00 PM. It's a wedding.
For a wedding. Any, somebody want to make a motion?
Yeah, sure.
Someone? Okay, and we have one by Mike, second by Ken. Any discussion? This is just a one-day thing?
You're one day, yeah.
Okay. So, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Aye, opposed? Carrie 400, you want a signature on this?
Uh, can I see, I believe there is a spot he is supposed to sign.
Town city clerk signature?
Sorry, I should, I haven't looked at it.
He's going to be busy, isn't he?
Yeah. I didn't know they catered.
Do you see that as my signature, or yours?
No, this is the town clerk's signature.
Town clerk's signature?
Okay, so yeah, just approve them, and then she signs them.
Okay, don't, all right.
Yeah.
And the Dutchman Tavern...
Let me see, we're going to have her do it tomorrow?
She signs, like, our catering businesses in town and all in, this is one office we still want to approve, yeah.
Okay. And the Dutchman Tavern, again, for a wedding on one specific day, this is also from 4:00 to midnight, or not also, this one's 4:00 to midnight, on 9/9/21 on Myers Road.
So moved?
Mike, second by Ken, second by Ken, any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So Carrie 400. So, review of action items. Any, nothing else that you have?
No, no, that's it.
So, we had two people come in today, asking for us to do something. So I think, I guess I'd like to look at a map and, and just see what she's talking about.
Yeah, we, we can, yeah.
She's saying that a right of way, that people have been calling Sleepy Hollow is only, is only her driveway, but then, you're also saying that it does go beyond that. So that's kind of a...
Yeah, it's the access road to the camps. And the camps, although, you know, it turns into, we all know it turns into eventually a ghost path, but, you know, this is going back at least four years with us, when the state first asked, and we objected to doing it, and then we got the letter telling us...
We have to.
We have to, because we're going to be held liable for someone not being found.
I think she's just worried about her mailing address, and let me talk to the...
Yeah, well, let's get a little bit more information on it, and, because we've been back and forth with Tyler, I've read Tyler's explanation of it, and I understand Tyler's explanation of it. And there's little we can do unless you just flat-out say, we're just not going to follow what the state's telling us to do.
I'm not comfortable with that.
Yeah.
Because then you wind up not on a state 911 area.
Yeah, because right now, it is frankly where it should be.
Right.
And if you're driving, responding, and you are looking for a driveway, it's not, it's not going to match. You're going to come up and you're going to see, because it comes up right on, on, I assume they all have patrol laptops, it comes up, boom, you can see it, you turn it, it's up 120 on the right, and that's the way the system's designed. That's, and we've had this with a couple other residents who said, you know, you've got to change your address.
Yeah.
Because that's what the rules are, and the state made the rules, and if we don't comply, then...
Yeah.
We're the ones in trouble if somebody gets hurt and there's a delay in responding.
What was her last name?
Solian.
Solian, okay.
I understand it's a pain, and you've had yours changed, and...
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's a to-do, but it's not...
And all the other things, Google and that catches up as it's circulated. But they, they get nationwide, you can imagine the tens of thousands of these they get, and, you know, someone's sitting there typing them in.
Yeah, okay, and...
It's a free service, so there's not, they're not killing themselves to do it.
And you're going to ask Mike to touch up that cul-de-sac?
Yeah, we'd already talked about fixing that up, because it's one of those, it's a thumb way out, out of the way.
Well, I don't think the grader ever has to go up there, is it?
Yeah, you know, it's way out of the way and so we'll, we'll work on that. And then I, I think what we discussed earlier was the way to deal with it is just let's look at the larger project that Mike and I have discussed, how are we ever going to fund redoing that whole section anyway? But certainly if we want to pave it, the cheapest time to do it was when we have a whole crew working there anyway.
That road, that whole road, it's all got to be redone.
Yeah, we seal coated that or, or about five years ago to buy time because I know it's so much money.
We got to dig in, fabric and the whole, it's a whole.
Needs a base, the whole thing. It's the same problem we have in Perrin Acres.
Right, exactly.
That's why we, that's why we, we did both of those sections, just to buy us another five to 10 years. Because we're going to have to start putting money aside to take on huge paving for us. Huge paving projects. No money from the state for these, this has to be out of the town's pocket.
I'm, I'm thinking of the money we spent just on that entrance.
Yeah.
Several times because it's so badly constructed.
Yep.
Yeah, I mean, we didn't.
And this was the objection to the new apartment complex down there, not wanting to pave from, you know, Perrin Road up to the opening because even that part was so expensive. It's a lot, you know, it's no way around it, it's a lot of money.
Yeah.
Some of this ARPA money?
Oh, can't be used for that, no.
Can't be used for that.
No. But ARPA is restricted to sewage, telecommunications and water. And a whole bunch of really minor side things that we don't have any use for at this point. The debates will still go on with us what we're going to spend the money on. It's going to accumulate, we're going to get another 179,123 dollars shortly. The county money has been approved for not having counties, they had to get special permission because money was broken up by the counties in the rest of the country. So we're going to get a significant amount from that, I haven't been told the number yet, but if it's in the same formula, it should be quite a lot. They all have the same restrictions. Hopefully the infrastructure bill passes and that would open up funding for a lot of projects. Because that could all be used for road projects and culverts and bridge replacement. I mean, depending on how much they funnel that down to the towns. I know the state's going to want to take a huge chunk of it, which is fine, but, you know, most of the roadways in the state are controlled by the towns, so it'd be nice if they set some of that down.
Okay. Any other business come before us? We still have to. Take, entertain a motion to go into executive session for personnel and legal issues.
So mo.
Motion by Ken, second by Tony. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? So Carrie 400, downstairs or in your office?
We can just go in my office, it shouldn't take that long.